We do certify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First we approve of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda that made nineteen two thousand fourteen regular meeting as presented. Second?
A motion in second, I'll everybody say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion against. Next is the approval of the consent for agenda items.
I approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Sir.
We have motion in the second, I'll everybody say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion against. Next is public participation. Ms. Dr. Baker?
No, thank you.
Oh, you got nothing.
I was waiting.
Oh! Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. And next is the report of the superintendent.
Yes. First of all, I want to call your attention to the note from Chris Werner and his family during the loss of his father. And then, secondly, you have at your place an envelope that Mr. Mercer left for you pertaining to graduation. So if you would like to take a look at that, but graduation is May twenty-fifth at eight o'clock. And I believe in your envelope, you're sure that you would have directions about your whole agenda for the evening. When to get there, where to park, how to get parked where you need to park, when to be at the concession stand, when we will start moving out, all of that good stuff, I believe, is in there. Is there anybody who has a question about anything while we've got Scott here and can ask on that topic?
The parking lot being by the wall, right?
Yes, that would be this one.
Okay.
If they tell you that you can't park, you tell them that yes, I can park, I'm a board member and I need to get down.
We'll tell them graduation won't take place.
Exactly.
Nobody steals it.
So.
Do you want to know, can we tell you tonight if we're coming?
Sure, yes.
I will be coming.
Yeah, there's a few places that got taken, huh? You had trouble last year.
Well, I was told no, but as told, I drove on and I created myself parking spots.
There was a few that had our signs up and said, oh, let's park there.
I think we just came at the same time, it wasn't late, but it was some, they had nothing, like you said, someone was parking.
Okay. Well, we'll do the best we can, if we reserve them and.
Can't Mr. Haney just stand out there too late?
I'll ask him about that.
I'm sure he didn't have anything.
He's not.
No, so I think, I think he probably could, he'd be glad to.
That would be good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. If you ever notice.
I'll be there too. We'll all be there.
Okay, thank you. Everybody's present and accounted for, great. Good deal. All right, that's good to know.
Okay.
Then, of course, there will be project graduation immediately following in conjunction with Valley, and so, that's good. Kindergarten enrollment, if you look, I handed you a projected enrollment, not only of kindergarten, but also of the other elementary grades as well. This is just my best guess right now, I've tried to take into account for student retentions, and it's based upon what numbers we have as of May fourteenth, when I pulled the enrollments and on that date. So, as you can see, at Bloomsdale kindergarten looks to be about forty-seven kids. St. Jen Elementary kindergarten looks to be seventy-nine. And you can see on the chart there how many sections I think that we will need of each grade. And Bloomsdale, you know, we've got one very small class that's coming through, and they're going to be fourth graders. So we will move, as we've already approved Ms. Foff back to the third grade, and there will be Ms. Baker and Ms. Bell will continue in the fourth grade as they have been. Now, next year, you obviously see that those two classes, the two will move to fifth grade and we'll need to bump one of the fifth grade teachers down. So Ms. Suespin, I hope you've been talking to those ladies and trying to get somebody in their right mind to volunteer to move for a year or more if they so desire at that point. So, but that'll be, next spring, you'll have to kind of start thinking about that. St. Jen Elementary, kindergarten of seventy-nine, those are fairly full sections, but they're not horribly unmanageable. Just bear watching as we move forward. You know, if we get a massive influx of first day of school, then, you know, we may have to make some other arrangements, but we've done that before as well, so.
What's that threshold of maybe?
Well, I think when we made that cutoff the last time, we had, let's see, I believe we had twenty-five in each of the four sections. And so we moved five kids out of each section and made a fifth section of twenty. So that was, that was a really large class. That was, they're in second grade right, or first grade right now, actually. So, I don't know what the cutoff is, there's not a magic number, really. We get close to having twenty-three and twenty-four in each class at the beginning of the year, it's probably good to go ahead and pull the trigger and get another section. But that'll, you know, that's kind of a judgment call that you make as you get really close to that first day and even after the first day, when you see who actually shows up. There's nothing to say that out of this group, five of those kids between now and then, move away somewhere else and never show up the first day. You really don't know until they're all here. And we added a section, if you can believe it, that fourth grade, that really small class that's going into fourth grade at Bloomsdale, we added a section for them in kindergarten that year. There were, we added a fourth section of kindergarten and they have dwindled down to their two sections now. So it's, you do the best you can, make a judgment call and go from there, so. Anyway, that big, the class at St. Jen Elementary right now that has five sections is currently in the first grade. They have kind of lost some enrollment and projecting, if we move to four sections next year for them, there'll be twenty and twenty-one in each class in the second grade. Now, again, that's not allowing for anybody who may move away or end over the summer, you understand that. These are strictly projections, but based on what we know now, the numbers we currently have, it does make sense to go ahead and reduce them this year to four sections, and that's in your packet later on. We can talk about that, a little bit more about some reasoning why we might want to go ahead and do that for the coming year. So, anyway, that's what I see, based on our, the best information that we have right now. We have finished with MAP and EOC testing, except for probably some make-up work in special education maybe and that kind of thing, so be wrapping that all completely up very soon. You see that there are, we have ongoing safety drills right up through to the, almost the very end, and things have been going very well with those and our students are very, very prepared, as is our staff. Any questions, anybody?
We'll move on to unfinished business, the facility naming committee recommendation.
As most of you know, I think, you know, you're aware that my dad had surgery and my sister and I have been playing nursemaid tag team. And so the night of the facility naming committee meeting, I wound up needing to be on duty with mom and dad. And so Julie very graciously stepped in and led that meeting. And the notes from the meeting are in your packet, so you can see all the discussion. I think it was a very, very good discussion. I mainly included the notes because there are, there are a couple of items in there that you may want to, in the future, think about addressing. And they're really not pertaining to facility naming so much as they are about the Hall of Fame. And I thought there was some, maybe a good suggestion there. And Mr. Mack, I know you're a representative on that committee. And so, really, the main reason I included the notes here is so that you would have some information when it comes time to go to that committee again. So, but as for the gymnasium, I believe that the committee has recommended that we do, in fact, name the gym. And they would like to see and do suggest naming in honor of Ms. Peggy Johnson. And they, the board policy calls for them to give you three names to choose from. And so these are their three combinations that they came up with. And if I were going to recommend one of those three, I think I would recommend number two. But that left is left blank for you all to see what you think.
Can I ask some questions?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Fleet, at that, at that meeting, do you remember how many people liked which one the most? Or they're not listed in that order, are they?
They were, they were listed in the rest of the, Mrs. J.
I think I typed them the same exact way that they're listed.
In the order that the committee.
The first, the first one was Peggy, Ms. J., Johnson, Gymnasium. And then the second one was Peggy J. Johnson Gymnasium, and the third one was Ms. Peggy J. Johnson Gymnasium. Is that the correct, the order of preference of the committee?
Of the committee.
So that was, number one was, was the overall favorite that evening. And that was probably because a lot of the people who were there at that time said that everybody called her, Ms. J.
Ms. J, yes.
That's her.
That's all I remember for her being called.
Sure.
Where, where's the words getting used, are getting on, do you know?
That would remain to be the next question for you all to discuss, but, you know, we'll have to think about what looks good and Mr. Haney and, and Dr. Lindsay and Dr. Fleet will probably all need to weigh in on that.
And we have her record from seventy-three to eighty-one, it's eighty-one to, till eighty-nine. But we're not sure if we can, we can find all but one year, so we're trying to pump those down.
Wasn't there also some discussion led by Mr. Nix that maybe there could be something on top of it being outside, like something inside, memorabilia and explanations of the award that was named after her and her statistics, things of that nature?
I think that's entirely doable. So I think that's something for Dr. Lindsay and, and Mr. Haney to consider and Mr. Nix to consider what's appropriate and where in the gymnasium it would have a good place to be. And we've talked about some spots for additional trophy cases and display cases in the gym, the downstairs gym lobby. So I know that Chris and I and Dr. Lindsay had spoken about those earlier. And so, you know, that might be a good place as people are first coming in, there would be some spaces there that would be good display areas and stuff like that. So I would think that, that how to display it would be a decision for a later time and let some of those folks who are working in that building have some ideas about that. But I do think it's a good idea to put some information about her and why we would want to do that and her record and things of that nature.
That meeting, that meeting was very informative. It was, it was probably one of the best committees I've ever mentioned. And there's a lot more involved in this than I ever thought. Mr. Haney also did a great deal of research and had his facts together, and it was very impressive.
So you, you like to go to?
If I were going to recommend a name of a building, that's the name I would recommend, but you all have to, you know, make that decision.
Ms. Diesel, you were there, you were there, you sat next to me?
Yes.
So, go ahead, you were the gopher for?
Yeah, yes, when I was in high school, I was on the track team, you know, runner on the track team under Ms. J. But I was the volleyball manager and videographer at the time, so I had to get her tapes all ready for every Monday morning, all that kind of stuff, and yeah. And when she said jump, I said, oh, hi. That's how Ms. J was, and so, yeah. So I spent a lot of time, I spent a lot of time with Ms. J, yeah.
Well, then, you being there and you playing for her, you know, Mrs. Joker says pick number two. Everybody that was there that evening, and I mentioned I'm up front here, and I certainly would want to give this lady due respect. So I think I could say that the vast majority, if not everybody, that night was in favor of number one, simply because they didn't refer to her, they only referred to her as Ms. J. And it was, like I said, overwhelming. So what, what do you think?
Well, like, like Mrs. Joker's, I think number two sounds very nice. It's, I don't know, it's more professional seeming or whatever, so as an outsider looking in, I like number two. But as a person who lived during that time and knew her very well, you know, I'm a little partial to one because that's what no one ever called her Coach Johnson or Miss Johnson or anything.
I did.
Did you? Oh, that's good. The players just called her Ms. J.
In nineteen sixty-three when she came.
Yes, yeah. So I think one and two are both really valid, valid suggestions.
Who was, oh, who was on the board now?
She wasn't on the board then.
Well, I said, who was on the board now that was around that? And you said you played on her teams, right? How about you, Jerry? Didn't that happen? Be very careful, I'm trying to, I'm not.
And you're right, and I are very close.
Whatever she says, you said, yes ma'am, I did.
Would you know, that, that area where, I know you were from down the street, I believe.
Yeah, down, yeah, I grew up over there, I had a lot of respect for it. Because when she said jump, people jumped.
How about you, Mr. McDaniel?
I think it was just the respect, I mean, respect and.
If you, if you choose number two for a building and then you had something inside like a display or something, it just worked up, you could incorporate Ms. J and that.
I would like to.
And that, you know, I, I kind of like number two because I think it's more respectful, but.
It's a little more formal for naming a building, but I, I would say when you put up a display inside, you most assuredly would want with Ms. J.
Have, did they talk about putting a picture up with that?
Yes, I think there's memory.
If they did that, then they could put the Ms. J.
Sure.
And that's what I asked Jerry, someone has with their, their letter jacket, but we can't remember. Mr. Nix knows?
Yes. And I have, I have several eight-by-ten photos from back in the day, and a lot of our teammates do too. There, there's stuff around it, we put out a plea for it, people have things.
I put, I put out a plea Monday morning, tell me what you know, because I was trying to gather some information and some of Jerry's former classmates were bringing up to me by the end of the day, so.
Because those were the two state winning years, so those were big years.
I will add that the Missouri High School Volleyball Coaches Association, I think that's the name of it, but their award is the Peggy J. Johnson Award.
And that's the same as the name of the scholarship in her back in.
Or is it Peggy Johnson?
I mean, you talk about, it rolls off, it rolled in Peggy J. Johnson.
Yeah. I like that, I like that.
I think you said, people who.
Well, I think that you would, it is a little less formal and you would put it inside with the display about her. But I think most appropriately for the name on a building, yes.
If it goes, if we do work on the, let's say number, let's say number two, could we ask Mr. Nix to be working on the trophy case or the explanation of who should work on some of it?
Absolutely, yeah. I think that goes without saying, yes, that, that will be done, there will be, I think the committee indicated that they want that and that they're going to, if we name the building that, they'll move forward, so.
The, the award is Peggy Johnson.
Yeah.
Was it done? Is there actually a?
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll just, may I make a motion? Great. I'd like to move to approve naming of the high school gym, it's probably not the way that's written, with the name being the Peggy J. Johnson Gymnasium.
Sir.
We have a motion in the second, I'll everybody say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion against. Next is new business, the A-plus partnership, Mr. Mercer?
Yes, the revisions to the A-plus partnership plan were very straightforward this year. There are no changes in policy or procedure there. We looked at it as the A-plus committee last month, and also Mrs. Rath and I went through and made some revisions just to make sure that the document was timely. There were some changes that we made based on programs that are no longer offered, that we eliminated those. And I'm speaking specifically of intervention programs that we use specifically with our younger children. I hadn't updated those, so I got some help and went through those. Also made mention of the Stars Program, which had not previously been mentioned in that plan. So the changes were very cosmetic, again, no changes to policy or procedure. That, that's one item, and that will require an action. And I have a second item, would you like me to present that or would you rather act on the first?
It's all part of the same, yes.
On the, on the agenda. So I, I hope that you have this document, this is the cadet teaching proposal. This is something that's been on my heart for a while, and I finally took the steps along with the help of Mr. Toomes and Mr. Nix, who are my co-sponsors for FTA, Future Teachers of America. They also work with me on placing cadets, supervising cadets, checking their portfolios, handling meetings, things along those lines. So, Mr. gentlemen, help me with this. And basically, this is a proposal that would allow us to increase the number of hours, A-plus hours, that we award to our cadets who work for us throughout the school year. So as long as I've been here, we have allowed cadet teachers to earn ten hours per semester towards A-plus. And we did that for several reasons. One is because Mr. Stewart and I agreed with him, had the philosophy that students should be willing to go above and beyond what's within the normal school day. I agree with him on that. And secondly, we did it, we looked at the number of hours because when students are in the classroom during cadet teaching, they're not always helping students. Sometimes they're working on bulletin boards, sometimes they're running errands, doing odd jobs, things like that. So one-to-one trade-off didn't seem quite appropriate. However, I have always felt that we should give them a little more than we do give them. Basically, we're asking these students to volunteer to work for the school, somewhere in the neighborhood of hundred-and-thirty hours per year, and we award them twenty A-plus hours. I've always felt like that needs to be increased. So the proposal that's in front of you would allow us to do that and also allow us to make cadet teaching a graded course, which it has never been, it's only been pass scale. You earn the credit or you don't earn the credit. And the reason that I would like to see that component of this pass also is because many of our students who are really hardcore into the GPA race won't take cadet teaching because it doesn't do anything to benefit their GPA. Those are our smartest kids, they're our brightest kids, they're the ones who can be the most help to young students who need the tutoring, and they simply won't do it because it's no benefit to their GPA. So down, about two-thirds of the way down the page, I've written a sliding scale that would allow students to earn their hours based on how well they do in the cadet teaching course. And their grade will be based on their portfolio, evaluation sheets from the cooperating teacher, participation in FTA, things along those lines. So, so we have partnership plan and then also this proposal, which has been passed through the steering committee and was also passed by the A-plus advisory committee when we met last month.
Questions, anybody?
Everyone worked really well with that. I did want to tell you something, that I talked to a few businesses with our, that they're out. You'll see. No. I forgot what they're called now.
Are you speaking?
Yes. And the reason some of them aren't having them back is because of the hours.
Oh, okay.
So if you want, if they don't know that, I was just having to ask a few online, they weren't using them, and they said it was hard for them because they, their, their best hours that they need was like from eleven to one or eleven to ten to one or something.
Okay. I can share that with you, that, that might be something that we could fit?
We could change the hours.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On the recommendation to approve this, does that include Mr. Mercer's new grade scale?
The cadet teaching proposal is part of the A-plus program because it yields A-plus hours, so yes, that would be connected. The only way, if you wanted to approve them separately, you would need to set aside one or the other.
I'll make the, I'll recommend that to you to move to approve the A-plus partnership plan as presented.
Second?
We have a motion in the second, I'll everybody say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion against.
Thank you.
Next is the reduction. Next is the reduction of the second grade section for twenty-fourteen, fifteen at SDE.
The new, the reduction of second grade, as you saw on the, on the enrollment projection, as you're aware, this class, we added a teacher when they started kindergarten. They have lost some enrollment numbers because they were right at a hundred when we added that teacher. And this year, we had an opportunity for the, the teacher who's floating up with that class, has, she requested to be moved to Bloomsdale to kindergarten class that we had open out there. So, so right now, that fifth position stands open. I haven't, I haven't posted it because I wanted to let you all have the option of reducing that position. We would come to you next spring, when these kids are going into third grade, and ask for that reduction anyway, unless there's like a huge influx of, you know, if, if numbers all stay the same, I think we have to talk in those terms. If numbers stay, stay the same or even downtrend, we would ask to reduce that to four sections at the third grade level anyway. That's typically in the upper elementary where we feel like it's, it's all right to have twenty-one or two or three students per class, okay? So if we don't reduce it now, you're creating a situation where you're going to hire somebody in for one year and then next spring face the possibility of having to riff that person if there's no elementary job for them. So, you know, that, that's an unpleasant thing to have to do for anybody, you know? You don't want to have to get somebody in for a year and then say, no, I'm sorry, we don't have a job for you. So since we had this opportunity now where somebody voluntarily has moved, it gives us the option to reduce that through attrition rather than a reduction in force. So that's why I bring it to you now.
So you think as a second grade, that anywhere from twenty to twenty, to twenty-one kids would be okay in those classes?
Well, do I say it's ideal? No. And, and this, but it's certainly still within the minimum standards for the, for our stay. It's not at the desired standard range, but it is within the minimum standard range. So, you know, is it the best thing in the whole wide world? No, I will, I can't say that it is, but it's not the worst thing in the whole wide world either. I would venture to say that if we asked Ms. McDaniel how many kids she sat in class and would twenty or twenty-one be okay, she'd probably say heck down because I've had thirty or thirty-five before. So I don't, you know, I don't know if she did or didn't, but I, I know there were years when. but I, I know there were years when twenty, they would have welcomed to have twenty or twenty-one. So, you know, uh, certainly been done that way before, and, uh, I certainly feel that our teachers can handle that.
So, we, we would reduce this this spring?
Oh, I would think that you would, definitely.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go through the same process again this spring.
You know, the offices all open, what, the elementary open, all is first?
Yeah.
And that's when you start getting your transfer releases.
Yeah, you'll look at this again in August before school starts. Uh, Dr. Lindsay will continually be looking at these projections and adding the numbers as they come in and still making, you know, making sure things still balance out and, and that kind of thing. So, that's just an ongoing process all summer. It's just at this point, this allows us to move forward and not be worried about having an open position out there and people wondering if we still have a position to fill and, you know. Also allows Miss Hitt to make her class, classes and, you know, for next year and get them to the teachers and the parents and all before schools out, so.
Any more questions?
I move to reduce the number of sections of second grade essentially the elementary for two, the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year from five to four.
Second. You have a motion in the second, I'll go ahead and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion aye. Next is local compliance plan, Mrs. Wyler?
Okay, so, this plan, um, is the plan that Missouri comes up with for dealing with special education, the funding and all of the requirements for special education. They have to supply this to the feds to say how they are complying with special education. Because they create this plan, uh, school districts have the opportunity to just adopt their plan versus trying to write your own. We're not legal experts, we wouldn't want to take that task on, so we always move to, um, take on the model compliance plan that the state provides, and so that's all of the, of this action is about asking your permission to do such. And then we have to, um, supply a statement to them, and I always ask somebody to sign that when we send down. This only, it's not necessarily, um, changed every year, it's only changed when Missouri's, changes their plan for the state. So, I don't think we've had a change for the last year or two, but there have been some changes, and so the state has updated it. So, um, this plan is always in my office, or in the office, in the director's office and the district office for anybody that wants to see it. So, that's how we're going to meet the state requirements for special education. Okay?
You move to approve the compliance plan for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year.
Second?
You have a motion in the second, I'll go ahead and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion aye. Addition of assistant speech team coach?
We are, we are facing a good problem, um, with the addition of a beautiful, uh, performing arts facility and the addition of a middle school performing arts program, um, guess what? Kids are interested. And, and so we have a very large and burgeoning group of middle schoolers coming into high school who are interested in staying involved in the performing arts, and not only in the two or three productions that we might have here on our campus, but they are very interested in the, uh, speech and forensics teams that compete, uh, in our district and in our region. Uh, that includes a lot of different kinds of, of speaking things, including, uh, one-act plays and, um, um, just a variety of different dramatics type things that those kids are interested in and want to participate in, but also includes, uh, two different kinds of debate. And actually, that's where we're really finally seeing some interest. Uh, we have a group of kids who are very determined and dedicated and, and want to become, uh, proficient debaters. So, it's a great problem to have. We've got more kids than, uh, Ms. Google feels like she can adequately handle by herself now, especially with the drama. She, you know, she's in charge of the drama productions that happen here, as well as coaching these kids who are doing individual and small group events at the competitive level and now adding debate. So, um, we would like to see a new position created at the rate of point oh-two percent of base pay, which would be seven hundred and seventy dollars currently at this year's base. Uh, this would be, uh, similar to assistant FBLA, assistant FCCLA, very comparable to, it's the exact same pay rate and would be a comparable type position. Um, and this one, this position, we would like to have that person focused primarily on the debate kids, but occasionally, we'd be in charge of the whole group if there was a conflict with a play here and a competition elsewhere. So, uh, that would be the idea for this particular position.
Any questions?
I move to approve the addition of an assistant speech team coach effective for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year.
Second. Motion in the second, I'll go ahead and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion aye. Next is the addition of special education position for twenty fourteen fifteen at St. Jen Elementary.
Well, those of you who've been around for a couple of years now know the ebb and flow of the need for special education teachers in, we've had an extra one at Bloomsdale and then reduced that, and now, now the need arises in St. Jen Elementary. We've, we've placed a lot of upper elementary students actually in this late spring, um, and so because our co-teaching program has been very, very successful, we want it to continue to be so, and it's really good for those kids. Um, and so if you keep co-teaching effective, oftentimes that means that the folks who spend time in those classrooms can't then, they don't also have enough time in their day to take kids who just need, who need to be self-contained or who need to have resource time or those kinds of things, and that falls down then on the other teachers that work mostly with the lower elementary. So, we're, we're maxed out at the end of the year here. Normally, that's your high point of numbers of, on caseload, but because of late spring additions, it's looking like our next year's caseloads are gonna start at our high point if we don't add somebody. So, um, it would, it, it's necessary to fulfill their IPs and, and meet the needs of those students to add somebody who can help out at St. Jen Elementary. Not exactly certain what, what exactly their role will be, that still remains to be seen, and, and Ms. Wyler and, and Miss Hitt are working on that still, but, um, at this point, we know that the numbers are there that we're going to need some additional help. Ms. Wyler, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yes, practically, we, we need, we need some help to meet the needs of the students. The, the teachers are gonna be overwhelmed with the numbers of students they have, therefore, the needs of the students will suffer. I think we're in a place where they're performing and we're getting a lot out of them, and we're seeing some increase in performance. We need to continue to, to see that increase, and, um, if they don't have enough support, that the kids are gonna suffer.
I move to approve the addition of a special education position at St. Jen Elementary, effective for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year.
Second?
You have a motion in the second, I'll go ahead and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion aye. Hey, before we go on, did we forget the principals?
Yeah, if you don't mind to allow the principals to, time before we close, to, uh, do their principals' report. Scott, would you begin with the high school?
I know.
Um, I wanted to let you know that Kami Otto was selected as the St. Genevieve High School Health Student of the Month for April, and Al Geesler was our Rotary Student of the Month for April. Um, those of you who were at the, uh, awards banquet, uh, I heard me mention this, but I think it's worth mentioning for the public as well. Uh, our Scholar Bowl team this year placed second in the district tournament, and Ian O'Leary won an all-district medal at that event, so congratulations to those guys. Uh, we had a handful of students participate in the St. Genevieve Art Guild, um, show slash competition, and the SD Art Guild had six hundred and seventy-five dollars available for scholarships and prizes, and St. Jen High School students took home six hundred and fifty of that, including a five hundred dollar scholarship, which was awarded to Amina Patel. So, congratulations to Amina. Uh, Daniel Nitch, one of our juniors, has been selected, uh, to go overseas to Japan for six weeks this summer. That is a, uh, a scholarship which was put together by FCCLA, uh, the Kiko Man Foods Company, and also Youth for Understanding. It's a kind of a cultural exchange. He gets to go over there, lives with the family, learns a lot of culture, learns a little bit of the language, and all kinds of exciting things. Uh, he is, he is very excited, and we're, and we're excited for him, that's quite an honor.
Japan will never be the same.
We, we did have a very lovely baccalaureate service just a few weeks ago, I think some of you were there. Um, hats off to FCA, uh, for putting that together, of course, they did an outstanding job. Uh, it was, it was, uh, appropriate, it was inspiring, it was encouraging, and we still managed to get a laugh or two. It was just a very lovely evening. Um, choir joined us that night, which I thought was a nice touch, so, um, thanks to them for that. Uh, also, Mr. Nix asked me to mention to you about track over the weekend. We had several, uh, boys and girls both qualify for sectionals, and our girls as a team took the district championship. So, congratulations to them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Dr. Flea?
In the middle school, we celebrate staff birthdays with a lunch from El Toreros. It's wonderful. We had seven staff members who had student observers from other universities come in and, uh, watch what was going on. We had eight students who were considering transferring to the middle school next year, come in and shadow sixth, seventh, and eighth graders that we already have in place. Um, for two thousand fourteen fifteen, these, uh, eighth graders will be the ninth grade buddies at the high school. Sarah Moore, Burke Wyler, Becca Gons, no, I take that back, these are the buddies, you have mentors.
Those, yeah, those are gonna be the eighth grade buddies.
These eighth graders will be the mentors for sixth graders next year. Sarah Moore, Burke Wyler, Becca Gons, Sam Stolzer, Chase Kohler, Rachel Bowman, Lauren Mercer, Jayden Bowman, and Chad Denzey. Um, our track teams participated in the sixteen-team Janus Invitational, which was an elite selective meet at Festus, and there we had seven individual boy medals, individual events, there were some team medals in there, and then two, uh, individual event medals for girls. We held third-quarter wings, wings stands for wear-in to noticing good students, and we hold that at all three grade levels every hour in one day. They just get some free time to hang out and have, have a good time. Um, the seventh and eighth graders who won the science fair attended a reward trip at Skyzone, they had a great time. There were storms and we were on thins and needles all day, but it went very well. We had fifth grade parent night in the old gym. The eighth grade girls and boys all went to visit the Boag pro, program and Mrs. Fritsch and Denzey during their PE hour one day to see if they would like to take the program in high school. Um, our band students participated in the Windsor Junior High Music Festival. I think we had nine one ratings there, which was pretty outstanding. Um, again, our track team went and participated at North County. We had ten individual event medals for boys, seven for girls. Jazz band then went and performed at the North County Jazz Fest and got a two rating, with Justin Herter and Nathaniel Church earning outstanding soloist awards. We found one, I understand, is a big deal at that festival, so we were very proud of them. Uh, Ms. Arnold's advisory class and her buddy, uh, Maddie Helms, they are the two thousand fourteen Buddy Game champions, and this year's theme was the Hunger Game, so they were pretty excited to survive. Uh, at the middle school, we held pajama day. This is a fundraiser for Mrs. Rapp's advisory, all proceeds are being donated to the animal control shelter here in St. Jen. And the track team participated at the Maryville Invitational. Fourteen individual event medals for boys, two for girls. We held an eighties, eighties day dress-up day, which, which was a fundraiser for our science club, and then that night, the science club had an eighties dance in the old gym. We all loved the eighties. Um, thirty-six students who participated in our fundraiser in October met the requirements and earned the tickets, so I took them to the Cardinals game on April thirtieth. It was cold, but it was a beautiful day, and we won like nine to three or something, so it was an awesome day. Lots of home runs. Um, and then in the middle school, we have finished all special ed, science eight, science at the eighth grade level, sixth, seventh, and eighth mathematics, and sixth, seventh, and eighth communication arts, map testing, they're all in a box and they're all going out of milk tomorrow. So, that's been our accomplishments.
Oh, that was a thank you. Thank you, guys, that's always our highlight, that's when we really need it, right there. Ms. Lisbon?
Okay, each month, we have staff and teachers nominate other staff and teachers. Our staff of the month was Mr. Howell, Kenny Howell, our night custodian, and teacher of the month was Christina Rudolph Gilbert. Um, on April fourth, we had the dental group come in and supply varnish to our students. We had second grade MRI training on April fifth, we had a PTO spring carnival, and we had spring, uh, we had carnival games, um, hot dogs, bratwurst, we had bounce houses, and, um, we had silent auctions, and it was a huge turnout. It was one of the best carnivals we were having because it was beautiful weather, so we got to be outside and inside. That's the first time since I've been there in six years. Um, the fifth grade went to Busch Stadium in St. Louis to participate in the news channel five, KSDK Weather Plus Bash and a mad science program, and they got to attend a ballgame, and they were served hot dogs and chips by the stadium. Third grade teachers attended MRI training on April ninth. Kindergarten and first grade teachers attended RTI meetings on April tenth. Bloomsdale Elementary had a family fun night, and there were seventy-nine families with two hundred and seventy-six people in attendance. We had seven different stations, it was a spring theme where they went outside and planted seeds, and they had ice cream station, and they have plant journals that they wrote in their plants, and we, in their journals, and we gave away trees. Um, second and third grade attended RTI meetings on April eleventh. Fourth grade teachers attended MRI training. We had representatives from Boy Scouts went around and visited each classroom for about ten minutes and told about what Boy Scouts do and why it's important to be involved in Boy Scouts. PTO had a meeting on April fifteenth. Um, we collected soda tabs all year, we had several competitions, and, um, Ms. Bowen took that up over the weekend, a couple weekends ago, and she had a whole carload for, full of soda tabs and a whole carload full of family. And we found out a few days ago that we were the number one large school. We had two hundred and seventy-six pounds of soda tabs, so it was huge. Um, Thursday, April seventeenth, uh, we had Easter parties. April twenty-fifth, we had a fire drill. Um, Bloomsdale Elementary, uh, participated in a St. Jude Children's Math-A-Thon, and we raised one thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars for St. Jude's Hospital. Ms. Coon's class was the winner with raising four hundred and forty-three dollars in her class. Kindergarten registration was on April twenty-sixth, we had forty-eight kindergarteners and two preschoolers who were screened. Um, kindergartners took the Terra Nova test, third, fourth, and fifth graders started the math, and we are now finished, and they are all enveloped up, but not boxed up, so we're almost there.
Oh, thank you.
Um, we celebrated lots of birthdays, we celebrated our regular birthdays, plus we're celebrating all the summer birthdays. So, we are birthdayed out at the elementary, and our birthday is where each child comes up and gets a book and we write it for them. So, that's been fun and a little busy. Um, we had an Emerald Day, is what we called it, for Ms. Berry, and we had a day where the students could wear hats, and we all had T-shirts printed up, because Emerald is the color of the ribbon for liver cancer. And, uh, so, the money that we got from the sale of the T-shirts and that the children brought in for the hats is going to the American Liver Foundation. And we also have, well, I'm jarring, because I don't have mine on, these, uh, the rubber band bracelets, and they say, "In honor of Ms. Berry," and so we're selling those for two dollars a piece. So, just another thing we're doing to work through that. We are finished with math testing, and we are bagged, and maybe some of them are boxed, but we are definitely bagged, labeled and bagged, and that's a big deal. Uh, kindergarten buddy day was a big hit where the little ones came in and sat with our kindergarteners today, and they created a project, and they had a little tour of the building too. So, uh, it was a day where the current kindergarteners felt really big, because there was like, I'm showing him how to do things, and, uh, and the little ones just seemed to enjoy it, so that was a great one. Kindergarten teachers also had a, it's been renamed, Donuts with Dudes, and then we had a day that was Muffins with Misses. And so, two great days where the parents came in and you get to walk in the room, and there's all these big people in these little bitty chairs, and, and they're doing, make, one group's making goo and, and one group is, you know, painting their hands and, and making fish, so lots of different things going on. We also held a Title I meeting, and we looked at our data, uh, we looked at our surveys, and we revised our compact, which is that parent, teacher, or parent, student, school compact, and we thought about some ideas for next year. And one of the things the parents asked for was, "Give us some more things we can do at home." So, we've got some plans in the works for things we'll be sending home, extra things. Uh, it was PTA month, so, uh, Teacher Appreciation Week, and the PTA took care of them. We had massages and lunch, and we had a chocolate fountain, and the dentists were there that day, so we invited them down to the chocolate fountain, and they were just like, wow, really? And someone later heard the gentleman on the phone to his wife, and he's like, "No, really, it was a chocolate fountain." So, it was enjoyed by everybody in the building. So, um, we had our Student of the Month luncheon, where we have the students have to get to set, set a special table. We also had our Right to Learn Celebration for our authors to come in and read their stories and sh- We also had our Right to Learn Celebration for our authors to come in and read their stories and share and it's, it's, uh, it's always funny and touching, it's a, it's a great evening. And we've had field trips to the Magic House, the zoo, the arch, Citizens Electric had them out, so we're, we're just zipping all over the place. And the big deal is the sign that says St. Gen Elementary is up. And drive by tonight because it glows at night and it's beautiful, so.
Thank you.
You guys are amazing, all of you. We love it, don't we? Thank you for doing it.
It's a bunch of part of me.
It is. That's why I said, I think now we should have it right at this moment. All right. Mr. Terry?
I move, yep. I move that the Board of Education, over closed meeting with closed record and closed vote, following the regular open meeting on June twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, to be held in the R W Thomas Library, seven fifteen Washington Street, St. Gen, Missouri, for the purpose of discussing and going upon the following items of business. Legal action, cost of action or litigation, police purpose or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding or promoting particular employees, collapsing, formation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, preparation for negotiation with employee groups, specifications for competitive bidding until approved or published, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, sealed proposals and related documents that have all proposals or rejected or any documents related to negotiated contracts or the contract that's executed, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from exposure by law, records relating to municipal hotlines established for reporting abuse and wrongdoing, confidential privileged communication with an auditor, existing or proposed security system and structural plans of district property, records identifying or allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption of the configuration of components or the operation of computer, computer system, computer network or telecommunications network, credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual fees, access codes or authorization codes that are used to protect electronic transactions. I further move that notice in this meeting and its tentative agenda, as opposed to required by law.
Second.
Have a motion in second, Ward Call, Eric Bousner?
Yes.
David Hoba?
Yes.
Charlie Crowder?
Yes.
Joan Denzey?
Yes.
Pam McDaniel, yes. Martin Reesinger?
Yes.
Greg Brudeloff?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven over.
Move to go to a closed session, closed record and closed.